The town of Los Gatos Planning Commission Meeting of Wednesday, May 23rd, 2018 is now called or ordered. Mr. Paulson, will you call the roll?
Yes, thank you Chair Kane. Commissioner Badami?
Here.
Commissioner O'Donnell?
Here.
Commissioner Janoff?
Here.
Commissioner Hanson?
Here.
Vice Chair Hudes?
Here.
And Chair Kane.
Here. I would ask that you join Commissioner Hanson in our pledge allegiance to the flag.
Please, Josh. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of Canada. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The town of Los Gatos strongly encourages active participation in the public process, which is a cornerstone of democracy and essential for the planning commission conducting its business on behalf of the town council and citizens of the town. There are several ways for members of the public to participate in the deliberations of the planning commission. Prior to a commission meeting, written comments concerning agenda items may be submitted to staff. They are always welcome and helpful. At the meeting of the commission, there are two opportunities for members of the public to participate. One is during verbal communications period. An individual may speak on any topic not on the agenda. And two, any member of the public may speak during the public hearing of an item that is on the agenda. If you wish to address the commission tonight during verbal communication or during the consideration of an agenda item, please complete a speaker card, which are located on the back of the benches where you are sitting. Turn the card into a staff member and please print your name clearly so I don't mess it up. For anyone who intends to speak this evening, I'd ask that you come up to the podium, adjust the microphone so you're speaking directly into it. Please state your name and address for the record. In fairness to all who want to speak at this meeting, it is requested that you limit your comments to three minutes. In addition to their service on the planning commission, members of the commission serve on several town committees. Do we have any committee reports tonight?
Commissioner Hudes was going to make a report.
Vice Chair Hudes?
We had a meeting of the Historic Preservation Committee earlier today and we considered two items. The first was 11 Peralta Avenue proposing exterior alterations in a two-story addition, and that was approved. And 16 Pennsylvania Avenue, which was requesting modifications to a front yard stone retaining wall, and that was denied as submitted but with a recommendation to build that retaining wall with river rock materials such as the existing wall is constructed.
Thank you, Vice Chair Hudes. Any other reports? Then we come to the verbal communications portion of our meeting. Members of the public are invited to address the commission on any issue not on the agenda of tonight's meeting. There's a three-minute limit on, but I don't think I have any cards. Then we're going to move on. We move to the consent calendar. The items on the consent calendar may be acted on by a single motion, but before the planning commission acts on the consent calendar, any member of the public or any member of the commission may request that an item be removed. Tonight, we have two items on consent. One is approval of the minutes of the April 25, 2018, planning commission meeting. And item number two is 248 Jared Lane, A&amp;S Application S-16054, requesting approval for construction of a new single-family residence and removal of large protective trees on vacant property zone HR1. This is APN 532-34071. Now, the applicant has requested continuation, a continuance of this item, and it will be continued to the June 27, 2018, planning commission meeting. Do we have a request to pull an item or is it a motion to approve? Yes, sir.
I'll make a motion that we approve both items, one and two.
Is there a second? Commissioner Badami?
Second.
Any discussion? I'll call the question. All in favor? Aye. Posed. It passes six to zero. We move now to the public hearings portion of our agenda and consider agenda item number three, which is 32 North Santa Cruz Avenue, conditional use permit application U-18055. Property owner, Sherry Flick of Flick Enterprises. The applicant is Lululemon Athletica, requesting approval for a formula retail business. This is APN 529-0055. May I show, may I see a show of hands from the commissioners who have visited the property under consideration? Are there any disclosures by a commissioner regarding this item? Mr. Safdie, will you be presenting the case?
I will. Good evening, commissioners. Before you tonight is a proposal from the applicant, Lululemon Athletica, requesting approval of a conditional use permit to allow a formula retail business in a 3,500-square-foot commercial building located at 32 North Santa Cruz Avenue, also located in the C2-LHP zone. Per town code, a formula retail business located in the C2 zone requires approval of a conditional use permit by the planning commission. Based on the discussion provided in the staff report, staff recommends approval of the application, subject to the conditions of approval. This concludes staff's presentation, and we are happy to answer any questions.
Are there any questions for staff? Commissioner Hudes?
I understand that there was a previous formula retail at that location, and I also understand that CUPs stay with the land, correct?
So you are correct. However, the former, I believe it was Napa-style that was there, was gone for more than a year. And so, once a CUP has been approved, but that business ceases for a year, that CUP is no longer valid.
Okay, that was all I was looking for. Thanks.
Other questions for staff? Commissioner Hanson?
I realize that we are using the current formula retail policy, but I do know that the town council has been looking at the formula retail policy. And especially, I wanted to ask the question, especially in light of the letter that we got with our, our staff report from Larry. There was a meeting in April, I know where the policy committee had discussed it, and I realize that it isn't any direction set, but is there likely to be, is there a plan to make any revisions to the formula retail policy, or is that still being discussed?
Thank you. So, the policy committee did forward a recommendation to the town council. That recommendation will actually be considered on June 5th by the town council. And depending on the action of the entire council, the policy committee's recommendation was to suspend for up to 18 months the requirement for formula retail in the C2 zone. So that is one aspect. The other aspect that is that if, within that 18 months, five applications come in and are approved, then that would be reconsidered by the council. But we're not sure what the council is ultimately going to do with that, and that will again be heard on June 5th.
So, if I heard you correctly, the, if it were approved by council, the recommendation of the policy committee is that the formula retail would not need a CUP for 18 months?
Correct.
Okay, because you didn't say the word CUP, sorry. Okay.
Correct.
Other questions for staff? If not, I'll open the public portion of the public hearing and give the applicant an opportunity to address the commission for up to 10 minutes. I have two speaker cards. Janelle Lang... pardon?
Langvin.
Langvin. And Lindsay Lever.
Hi, thank you for having us, first of all. My name is Lindsay Lever, and my address is 327 Grant Avenue, San Francisco, 94108. I am the regional manager for the Northern California for Lululemon.
And my name is Janelle Langvin. My address is 855 Homer Street, Vancouver, B.C., in Canada. And I am the store designer for the Northwest region for Lululemon, Northwest U.S.
So, we're just going to take you through really briefly tonight, a little history of the company, some of our design intent, and some of the specific things you'll see localized for the Los Gatos store, and then also a few little things about our community. So, really quick background, you may know or you may not, but Lululemon was founded in Canada, in Vancouver, B.C. in 1998. Our first store in the U.S. was 2004 in San Francisco. And Los Gatos is home to our very first strategic sales partner. That's the term we use for wholesale, which was even before 2004. So, we kind of, Los Gatos is kind of the birthplace of Lululemon in the States, so for us, this feels a lot like, like coming home.
Yeah, so I'm going to guide you through just some of the design principles and design consideration that we looked at as we began to design the store. So, we'll flip to the next slide. Oh, we have that. Okay, great. Point it. Where do I point it? Okay, never mind. Thank you. Okay, so, one thing that we wanted to start with was just our overall vision. So, a little bit of internal voice that we use within our company. We consider this our north star, our guiding light when we are looking to establish roots in new communities, expand existing locations, relocate some existing stores to new spaces in the neighborhoods that we go to. And that is to cultivate highly profitable retail environments curated for the local community, where we celebrate sweating, meaningful relationships, and personal development. This is all encompassed in what Lululemon calls the sweat life. We're not just there to sell clothes, but to raise up our community that we show up in. And just a little bit of context, I know all of you said that you had visited the site. We're looking at 32 North Santa Cruz Ave, next door to Restoration Hardware and across the street from Apple, just highlighted in the red there. And then leaning into the community inspiration and design. So, with all of our Lululemon stores, we definitely lead with community intent. We have some primary principles, just to make sure that our guest experience is really incredible when each guest comes into the store. But beyond that, all of the elements of the design really hone into what that community would want or would need, or what would resonate really well with the community. And with that, we usually dive into deep amounts of research. I've come down and visited Los Gatos. Now, this is my third time coming to the community to really seek it out, you know, walk the streets, see what the community is doing, get in touch with our operational partners like Lindsay, who will be taking care of this community, and to see what, you know, the vibe is, what it feels like. And through our research, we developed some, some assumptions, which I'm sure you would all probably know to be true for your community. And so, for, for this community, we came up with, the community in Los Gatos cared deeply about their parks and outdoor spaces, they're deeply rooted in the preservation of their town's history, tons of things to do year-round, art fairs, jazz concerts in the square, restaurants, parks, lots of things, bringing the community together. And with that, and everyone knows everyone feel, and extremely tightly woven, I notice, you know, walking down the street, popping into coffee shops, people saying hi to each other, knowing their names, whether it's from working together or having gone to school together, or just living and having been neighbors for how many, 20-plus years. And with that, it's also a very yoga and CrossFit-centric community, with CrossFit having been founded very nearby. And with all of that, we did take design inspiration from the quiet hills and wine country culture that we felt was really prevalent here, and the upscale vibe that still maintained a really rooted small-town charm and friendliness. One of the really cool things that we also bring into each of our stores is unique art done by a, a local artist within the community or in the surrounding community that would be able to bring some life and vibrancy to each of the stores and make each space feel very unique. So, the artist that we've identified for the Los Gatos store, her name is Morgan Bricka. She's from the peninsula, and she specializes in uplifting and powerful narratives that become an engaging visual gift to the local community she creates them for. Each piece is given tons of thought and time to ensure the artwork resonates with the community and guests they are created for. There's an image of her down there on the bottom, and the images that are shown are just some of her previous work, just to give you some context of the type of stuff that she pulls together. We'll be working with her directly to come up with a completely unique piece for, for this store, and we're planning on highlighting them in two separate locations here. So, it will be quite a powerful visual inside the store as well. And then, just a brief, a brief look at what signage could potentially look like. We will definitely be going through our signage, application, and permit process following this if we are granted approval this evening. And we can move on to the next one.
Yeah, and just a couple of things to highlight. As Janelle spoke to, we, in our design intent, we are so hyper-local and try to make each store fit the community, but we also run our stores like that. So, this is actually a photo of every key leader in the Bay Area about a month ago, taken outside the Soul Cycle, just up the street here on Santa Cruz. Because we still come here, even though we don't have a physical presence, this is where our community is. We've been here for years. So, they actually hosted a development day here. We pay our staff really, really well. We hire locally. We'll have between 15 and 25 employees. We keep our base pay at 75 percent, in the 75th percentile of the retail market. So, with, with commission, it's usually much higher than that. We also offer a really robust benefits package, flexible schedule. We have something called a sweaty pursuits card. It's a prepaid debit card that each and every employee gets monthly from the company, and they can use it to go sweat in the community. So, they go to studios, gyms, all that kind of stuff. They develop partnerships. So, we not only support our team and our guests, but the surrounding studios as well. We love to keep it local. A lot of our data from our guest profiles, which people opt into, show us that we have a lot of residents in Los Gatos that shop with us. And right now, they're shopping at Stanford, and they're shopping at Santana Row, and they're shopping online. But they don't have a place here to really easily go, so we would be able to fill that void for the local resident. And then, lastly, something people don't know about Lululemon and are surprised to learn is that we also carry men, so we serve the entire market. We have, we make clothes, obviously, for yoga and CrossFit and working out and all those things, but we make lifestyle as well. So, we kind of serve the entire market, which is super cool. And with that, any questions for us?
Questions for the speakers? Commissioner Hanson?
I think I'm probably one of your best customers, but I had a, one of your, I had a question for you, though. There was a Lululemon showroom in Los Gatos a few years back, because I've been to it. And I imagine there's, the reason for it is because it was a showroom versus a store, but it did close. So, if you could just comment on, you know, what, why that happened, and, you know, what's going to be different about this? The location, I know, is different and...
Yep, a lot are different. I actually managed that showroom for like eight months in 2010. So, at the time, I think we opened in 2008, and our showroom strategy has shifted, but at the time, we went into new markets and tested it out and see how we did. We did very, very well, and Los Gatos, the community, really embraced it. We loved, we loved being here. In 2010, retail was really tough, and we were not opening any stores in small markets. That was like something we declared. We closed a lot of the showroom spaces to focus on the bigger markets. Now that the economy is back and we are a much bigger company, we're revisiting some of those smaller spaces. Yeah.
And so, you don't have any concerns for the next downturn that will inevitably happen and all that stuff?
Not, not, no. We're inside, I mean, at the time, I think we were about a, like, a billion-dollar company with revenue, and now we're like 2.7. So, just the sheer amount of like backup cash we have in the bank to protect ourselves from that is really healthy.
I had one follow-up question. It was about, since you're going to, it would be downtown and you're close to the high school, I mean, you said you get involved with the community. Will you be reaching out to the high school? I notice every time I go to the store, there's high school girls running around in Lululemon, you know, leggings and whatnot. So, I mean, do you actually reach out to the schools and...
We do, yeah. So, we have several ways we can do that. We, each store individually has their own, what we call here-to-be, but it's a social impact. And so, oftentimes, the store manager will choose to invest in the local schools with that money. We also have team sales programs, so the schools could buy like uniforms from us at a discount, something like that. We have a vision and goals program that we offer to the community complimentary, that we love to bring to, to young high schoolers, because it can be really impactful. So, yeah, there's a lot of ways that we would work.
Sounds good. Thanks.
Other questions? Commissioner Hudes?
Thank you. And it's good to hear about the background of the previous story, because I wasn't aware of it. The, the question is going to be about formula retail, because we have a requirement to approve a conditional use permit for formula retail. They're not, formula retail is not just automatically approved. And in, in looking at the, the reason for it, you know, I go to the intent of the town code as it was developed by the council at the time, and, and there's a quote in our report that says that we, we should avoid the transition of the town's unique retail environment into one that is homogeneous with retail areas in other communities. So, could you maybe just explain to me how this will not lead to making the retail in town homogeneous with other communities?
Yeah, I think she can probably speak to that from like how we'll physically look different than in other stores. Much of the way that we're set up is very decentralized. So, the store managers, I spoke to the here-to-be budget, they have their whole budget themselves and oversee that completely. And so, they get to choose where they invest, and they always invest really locally. So, just that alone, based on like the relationships and the investments we can make here, kind of set us apart from like other formula retail, I would say. So, we make a very cognizant effort to be grassroots, to go in and build relationships. You'll never see a Lululemon commercial, TV commercial, you rarely see a billboard, all that extra like marketing money that you would see from other formula retail is, is, is built, is done through our like relationships in the community. Yeah, so that's one way.
Okay, so, I haven't quite got it yet, so maybe if you could continue to explain how having a formula retail store, which Lululemon is, will not make it homogeneous with other retail, with retail in other communities?
Yeah, so I guess what I was trying, what I'm trying to articulate is that we don't behave like a normal formula retail store. So, we're so decentralized that it feels really local. We know people's names, you know, we know where they sweat, we know their kids. We, we make a really cognizant effort to do that community feel. A lot of that is through budgeting, a lot of that is through hire, a lot of that is just our brand. So, I mean, we certainly are a large retailer, and we make a really special effort to not appear that way. Yeah. Not, not to hide it, but it, we've found it more impactful to grow our business through the organic ways. Does that say it a little better?
Yes, thank you.
Okay, yeah.
Other questions? Thank you very much. I will now invite comments from the members of the public. Anyone who wishes to speak may turn in a speaker card. I have no speaker cards. So, you will have an additional five minutes to provide more information or rebut anything you just heard.
We'll pass on that five minutes.
I have some questions.
Sure.
It's probably obvious, but I couldn't figure it out. What is Menemsha? And who is Mr. Dubois?
Okay. Menemsha is our hired architect, so we use regional architects for, across the United States and Canada. Menemsha is the name of the architecture firm, and Randall Dubois is our architectural lead on this project specifically.
Or advocate.
Exactly.
He mentions, and you mentioned the same phrase, apparel is for yoga, running, training, and most other sweaty pursuits. What's he talking about?
Yeah, our product, it's, it's a very buzzwordy thing, I guess, to say sweaty pursuits. It's Lululemon lingo. Just any physical activity. Yeah, hiking, walking your dog, like anything that would make you work out or exercise. Yeah.
You mentioned employees. Did you say 25 employees?
No, we're thinking 15 to 25, yeah.
That's a lot to run the store, so that's a good thing. Mr. Dubois says, "A staff of five knowledgeable employees will assist with the operation of the store."
Oh, five at a time. Yeah.
On any given shift?
Yeah.
What does he mean by the word knowledgeable? I'm assuming you're going to hire local. That means they haven't worked with you before. Do you provide extensive training?
Extensive training.
Will these people be able to do yoga?
It doesn't matter if they can do yoga. It matters that they can speak to the quality of the fabric and the community. We, we joke that you get your PhD in fabric when you join Lululemon, because we have so many subtle things with our product that different, are different based on the sweaty pursuit that you choose.
How many hours of training do you give?
About 40 for a sales associate, like a baseline, and then store managers upwards of 200.
Okay, thank you. Other questions? Seeing none, I'm going to close the public portion of the public hearing. And ask if commissioners have any questions of, you may sit down. And ask if the commissioners have any questions of staff, wish to comment on the application or wish to make a motion. Commissioner Hanson?
I just had one question. It was in the, in the terms and conditions. It says generically for a formula retail, if this were approved. And in the past, we've, we've had other CUP applications where we were more specific. And in light of the potential change that my company for the council, you know, this might be a moot point, but I wondered, was that intentional to just make it generically formula retail versus formula retail of fitness apparel or something like that?
It was intentional.
Okay. And is that, is that what was in the CUP when Napa-style was there? It just said formula retail?
I do not know. We were looking at avenues there applying for a formula retail. We're not applying for a specific detail, and I know the commission has provided details in the past. We're trying to pull back on that, given the time and expense that it has incurred to go through this process. And so, we have intentionally in this case, and so this is probably the first one you've seen that has this more generic formula retail use.
Okay, that's fine. Thanks.
Commissioner Hanson's question, in part, refers to the letter from Larry Arzy, and I, I had a similar line of thought. But I think she's covered it, so I'm going to ask you, if this CUP process, application was approved, does that in any way dilute or prejudice the existing retail store language?
Staff does not believe so.
And on the clarifications that may be going on or are going on with town council, anything we do here potentially prejudice that process?
It will not.
Commissioner Badami, you had your hand up.
I was going to provide my comments and maybe try a motion. Retail is struggling downtown. I work downtown on North Santa Cruz Ave, and I see retail disappearing, and that concerns me greatly. This would be a retail use. I find it a type of store that would complement a lot of the surrounding businesses and add the vitality that we are looking for downtown. Being that it is a formula retail, I do have concerns about that, but this is indeed a sophisticated product. So, I will try a motion. I move to approve conditional use permit U-18-005, requesting approval for a formula retail business, Lululemon Athletica. And I can make the required findings for SEQA and for a conditional use permit per exhibit two.
Thank you. Do we have a second? Commissioner Hanson?
I'll second the motion.
Are there questions or comments on the motion? Vice Chair Hudes?
So, I just had a comment, and these formula retail CUP applications are problematic for me, because I think there was a reason that the council didn't just say previously that it doesn't matter, and it can just be approved without going through a public process. And I understand they may change it, but they may not. So, so I'm a little conflicted on it, and I have to really go back to, you know, the language that's, that currently exists. that currently exists about not making the town homogeneous. So I have to really look at that. And with regard to this particular application, it is a compelling, it is a compelling story that they have about how they tailor it to the environment and how it is very much a community asset when they're done. Leaving it open-ended as any formula retail works against that. So if it were a formula retail of fitness apparel, that would, to me, constrain it to, because it follows the land, that it would constrain it to a similar type of business that were to come in in the future. And so while normally, that would be enough to say, I would want to see that constraint in the ordinance, I think we're facing kind of a unique circumstance with the current zoning downtown, the challenges, the parking challenges downtown, and also what I think is the somewhat misguided zoning of the North Forty that will potentially lead to a massive shopping center. So for that reason, I have to look at the whole picture, and I will be supporting the motion, but I am cautious about it, and I think my support for the motion is due to the unique circumstances that are occurring today with the threat to retail. I think retail is essential and vital to the downtown, and so, you know, in today's environment, I'm able to support it, because I think that it will lead to keeping Los Gatos unique. But it's, for me, it's not a blanket approval for any formula retail. It is very specific to the circumstances that we're facing here.
I agree with you, Vice Chair. Should this be approved, it's not a blanket approval for other formula retails going forward. But I think Commissioner O'Donnell and I have been around the longest, and we may have seen, oh, twenty, twenty-five of these, Tom, and we only denied successfully one of them. And I'm looking at the report from staff showing twenty-nine locations in the CBD Central Business District, and as I went down the list, I thought, do any of these provide us with harm? No, they don't. They fit in. I think the presentation was most impressive on how much background they did. I haven't heard that before. And there's some enthusiasm and excitement going forward, and I think the director of Community Vitality would say that if anybody asked her. I think this is a good project, and I intend to support the motion. Other comments? Commissioner Hanson.
I just wanted to say, I had attended the policy committee when they first started discussing the formula retail, and they asked me for my comments, and I said, well, there had been a, Ms. Runn had arranged a presentation on the state of retail. I don't know how many of us have had gone to that, and one of the takeaways was it's been such a difficult time for retail. So we've been having trouble getting good quality, you know, people to come into Los Gatos, and it's harder for the single-location businesses to establish in Los Gatos. The rents have been going up and all that kind of thing. So the other thing I wanted to say was, if you kind of look at the overall trend in Los Gatos and in many other municipalities, you're seeing a lot of these retailer fitness organizations. You know, we have Orange Theory, you know, over by Shannon Road. We have SoulCycle downtown. There's Cycle Bar in the Downing Center. And so to me, Lululemon is very complimentary with what we're seeing with this trend with this more fitness participation kind of retail locations. So I definitely would support the motion.
Before I go further, our director of Economic Vitality is here. She's elected to attend this meeting. Do you want to add anything to the staff report?
I don't have anything to add. I mean, I think that this use would be a fantastic addition to our community. It's something, it's a specific brand I've heard over and over and over that people would like to see be here. I would have one comment that since this map has printed, two of the formulas listed here have actually closed. So we have, this would be the 27th in downtown. So we're actually seeing even formula retail not being such an overbearing use that I think a lot of people may think that it is. It's often complimentary and creates the retail synergy that we need to keep the more independent stores healthy.
Thank you. Commissioner Jenna, if you had your hand up.
Yeah, just a question. Commissioner Hootis is concerned about the broad application of formula retail in the CUP, but if we approve it as the motion stands, wouldn't it continue to be that broad, and it wouldn't specifically limit us to approving fitness wear in the future?
Is that a question for Vice Chair Hootis? Vice Chair?
Yeah, I mean, that is my understanding, that it would be broad, and I was saying that in the unique circumstances that we're in today with the, particularly with the potential threat of massive formula retail in the North Forty, I think we need to give the downtown a fighting chance. And so in those circumstances, I would be willing to support a broader use of the term formula retail in today's environment.
Great, thank you.
Any other questions? Seeing none, I'm going to call the question. All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Seeing none, it passes unanimously, six-zero. Mr. Paulson, are there appeal rights?
There are appeal rights, thank you. Anyone who's not satisfied with the decision of the planning commission can appeal that decision to the town council. Forms are available in the clerk's office, and there is a fee for filing the appeal. Additionally, the appeal must be filed within ten days.
Thank you, Lululemon, and good luck to you. I move on now to other business. Item four, commission matters. Any commissioner have anything they want to mention or address? Seeing none, I move to the report from the director of Community Development, Mr. Paulson.
Thank you. Since we had a break on the ninth, there have been two council meetings that have occurred. Last week, the council considered the budget, both the operating budget and the capital improvement program, which you guys saw.
Which is what we worked on.
And so they have adopted those, and those will go to the June 5th meeting for a final approval. Prior to that, they had a meeting on the first, yeah, the first, May 1st, where they considered a couple items that the planning commission had seen. One was Alberta Way. They ultimately granted that appeal and approved a 69,000-square-foot building on the Alberta Way site. And there was a couple other additional caveats that they had that related to a potentially, the potential 69,000-square-foot building. The other item that they looked at was Twin Oaks. That was ultimately denied. The council, in their discussions, talked about the proposed use not being consistent with the general plan, and so they didn't want to cancel the Williamson Act. Now, they wanted to run its course, which is the ten-year cycle, so I believe it was 2025, that should nothing else happen, they would come forward. But we're still waiting to see whether or not the applicant is interested in pursuing other options prior to that date.
So of the ten years required by the act, seven remain. Is that seven years to go?
Yeah, it's approximately seven or eight.
I have a question. Will town council meet on July 3rd?
Town council is not meeting on July 3rd. They're meeting on July 4th for the joint study session with the, or sorry, you said July. The council will not be meeting in July at all. They don't meet in July.
Oh, I see.
Sorry. I thought you meant June, and I was talking about June.
We have a joint meeting coming up.
June 4th.
June 4th.
Correct.
Any questions for the director? Seeing none, this meeting is adjourned.